And we will get our meeting started. Good evening, council, good evening, staff, a special welcome to our MP Bruce Stanton this evening. And so we are on with Rogers this evening. Council meeting of Wednesday, May 13th by Zoom. So we will call the meeting to order and I've done my welcome and my council commitment. We consider it done. So we move on to the approval of the agenda. And so I would need a mover and a seconder for the approval of the agenda. I have a mover and a seconder. So I see Councilor Rose with a yes, and I don't see anybody else. If someone else would like to lift a little green card?
Counselor Cummings.
Okay, Counselor Badabonkar. So regular council meeting, May 13th, that the agenda of the regular council meeting of May 13, 2020 be approved as presented, all in favor. Okay, that is carried and we move on to the declaration of pecuniary interest if anyone so has one, so declare if not at the appropriate time. Moving on to proclamations and Stace, what are we doing here? You're going to put something up?
Yep, you can go ahead and I'll just do it behind the scenes, your worship.
Okay, so I will ask for a mover and a seconder for the proclamation. Deputy Mayor and Counselor LaRose, thank you. And so with the proclamation, May is museum month. And whereas throughout our community, museums, art galleries and heritage sites reflect our local history and culture and contribute to our development, whereas this month provides an opportunity to increase awareness of our community's museums and celebrate the contribution of these institutions made to qualify a quality of life, education and economic development. And whereas museums, galleries and heritage sites welcome visitors and tourists to our community and whereas these museum galleries and heritage sites are valuable resources for education and learning, are important community hubs and support our work for diversity and inclusion. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Doug Larue, hereby proclaim May 2020 as May is Museum Month in Penetangwishing and encourage all residents and tourists to support our local museums and heritage sites. Thank you all. We will now move to deputations and presentations and this evening, we're honored to have our MP for Simcoe North, Bruce Stanton with us. Bruce is going to give us an update of what is happening at the federal level and then if there are members of council who would wish to ask questions of Bruce, who just lift that little yellow card. Okay, so Bruce, welcome and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council and staff. Prensièrement, c'est un grand honneur pour participer dans votre rencontre, pour se conseiller. Je me souviens, il y avait une demande pour avoir un auditoire pour le conseil dans le passé. Et je exprime mon intention pour recommander cette invitation dans le futur. You were kind enough to invite me to come to council even before this pandemic started and that has certainly altered the course for many of us in public service, as you well know. So I certainly stand at the ready to, at a later time when council wishes, I'm certainly happy to come and revisit those issues around infrastructure or other matters that may arise after the pandemic, after we get past this peak period. But let me take a few minutes and just go over some of the programs that the federal government has been putting in place and then I'd be happy to take your questions. I think before I get to that, I just want to share my compliments to the town and all of the workers in the town, all of the things you're doing as a municipality to keep your town safe in these unusual times. I think it's perhaps not as well recognized as people might think to know that workers in municipalities like Penetangwishing, what they're doing to keep supporting important essential services from policing to fire to the use of municipal facilities where needed, all of these things really go a tremendous way in keeping people safe and stopping the spread of this virus. So compliments to you all on that and also for using this technology. I know councils around our region are using this now, as is parliament, as you well know. In fact, just this week, we saw a complete preparation for a virtual parliamentary debate, something that only few parliaments in the Commonwealth Westminster system have started to look at. That's still in the development, but fairly close to being able to launch for the use of the 338 members across the country. Now getting to the federal programs, the, this of course is an unprecedented time. Those of us in this generation have never been through anything quite like this in terms of what has been demanded as a federal response principally to help workers and businesses get through this complete loss of income because of the closing of businesses, understanding that the businesses and jobs and livelihoods have had to be put on pause because of public health priorities. That's, we're all under an emergency order of the province of Ontario. The province decides how and when that will start to be lifted. We've all been watching that, but we need to work within those confines and the recommendations of our health officers to whom I must say, great compliments to the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, who for us has been the principal source of local recommendations around health advice and how to best prepare our workplaces or if we have any questions about how to deal with the pandemic at a personal level. So back to the programs, a massive amount of federal financial aid has been put in place through programs like the Canada Emergency Response Benefit, that's the $2,000 a month. One can estimate based on the numbers, there's in our writing of Simcoe North, probably close to 20,000 people would be, would have applied for that emergency response benefit. So you can see, nothing in my term has even come close if you set aside the usual benefits like old age security and guaranteed income supplement. But this is an emergency wage benefit, rather. The wage subsidy for businesses, the loan program for small businesses that have between 20,000 and a million and a half dollars of payroll, these are all things that are helping people to get over the hump to a point where we can start to reopen the economy. One part of that, which has, I think particularly been, we've seen right at home in Penetangwishing, local manufacturers like IFM and Magna that are tooling up production of personal protective equipment. One of the things that has become very obvious and evident for Canadians is the importance of making sure we can prepare or have the capacity, the industrial capacity to prepare those essential products that we need for a pandemic, for a health emergency like this. Perhaps it came at us a little quickly and we were less prepared than we should have been. We will not make that mistake again. So it's been great to see local manufacturers stepping up to the plate. We have been working in the case and they still have to go through some regulatory, albeit somewhat watered down regulatory process to get the approvals done. But I can say that our employers in the local area are stepping up in ways that are, I think, quite outstanding for the times that we're in. And as we get past the peak of this curve of the pandemic, as we see, we're just on the cusp now of seeing a gradual reopening of the businesses, we will be turning our attentions to the kinds of investments that need to take place to make us stronger and more resilient for these kinds of situations in the future. And that, one of those big ones that has emerged, of course, is the lack of broadband internet capacity in rural areas, which you have some in Penetangwishing, certainly those in the center of the town are fine, but when you get out to more distant locations, the necessity of having that high speed, good quality and affordable high speed internet will be a must. I've already mentioned the repatriating our capacity for PPE. And a second big looming issue that we realize now, we as a country have not paid close enough attention to, and that is the situation in our long-term care homes where we've seen, you know, getting close to 80% of the deaths from COVID-19 have occurred in long-term care homes across the country. That, that statistic looms much higher than in other developed countries. So it's really pointing to some attentions. I realize that is most, that is a provincial responsibility, but I can say that the discussions have already begun on how we as a country can do a better job for our most elderly, the most frail in our community. They're the ones that did the heavy lifting for us to get us here. We owe it to them to make sure they can have those later years with the proper kind of health attention, be it at home or in a residential type situation. So that's about it. I'll leave it there. I hope I didn't go on too long there, but I wanted to leave some time for comments or questions. I can say I'm able to tell you today, viewing your wonderful proclamation for museums, we just got the first list of organizations in our writing that will be receiving funding for the Canada Summer Jobs Program. And I can say tonight that one of those is going to the Penetangwishing Centennial Museum. So one of many more, I hope. So there's another list coming. So we're about halfway there. But if you have some questions on Canada Summer Jobs, I'm happy to answer those as well.
We're glad to hear that you're also bringing us some very good news, Bruce. Now, any members of council that would like to ask question of Bruce? And just lift your little yellow card up if you do.
Counselor Levy?
Your worship, do you have, I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you have the gallery view, are you able to see all members of council currently on your screen?
No, I am not.
Okay, so if you can just, sorry to interrupt the meeting, everyone, I think that's will just help the mayor function through the rest of this. If you go to the very top, you're going to see gallery view and you click that and then you'll see everyone.
Gallery view, well, well. Now I see everyone, okay. So now I can ask the question and I see Counselor Levy, yes, okay, Counselor Levy, you go. Next would be Counselor Badabonkar. Okay, Counselor Levy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much to the honorable member for being here tonight. My question is about an announcement that federal government, the Prime Minister made today. I'm asking this question mainly on behalf of the Economic Development Corporation of North Simcoe, which I am a board member. The announcement today, one of them was pertaining to businesses that had fallen between the cracks of SERB and $40,000 loan, payroll, et cetera. And I've been reading as much as I can, but I don't have it, to date, I don't have any clarity. I understand the announcement was made only made today and I'm wondering if Mr. Stanton has any clarity on that particular announcement today. Thank you.
It's a great question, Counselor Levy. In fact, the announcement that the Prime Minister referred to today in general terms was indicated through one of his announcements, I think about 10 days or so ago. The government announced just short of a billion dollars for Canada's regional economic development agencies, so $962 million, with the full intention that these monies would go to businesses that, as you said, do not meet the criteria for the CIBA loan or SERB or the wage subsidy. And so the way that's going to be delivered in communities like ours will be through the Community Futures Development Corporation. So North Simcoe CFDC will be one of, number of about 287 million of that, 962 will go directly to the CFDCs and that will be the access point for businesses that want to go there. We have, we have not yet seen the actual details that's being worked up, but I note that because that announcement did happen today, that it means that that is just on the horizon. So our good people at the North Simcoe CFDC will be the point at which we, and that's what we have been directing businesses who have come to us to say, hey, it doesn't fit for me, you know, I don't meet the eligibility rules, whatever the case, I said, well, stand by, your local CFDC will have more information on how they might be able to help you there. I can't say how much money they will have, but I would guess it's going to be in the million dollar range or so for, for support for small businesses that don't, don't fit into those other programs.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Badabonkar.
Thank you, worship, and good evening, Mr. Stanton, it's good to see you. My question has to do with respect to funding support for municipalities across Canada. Certainly, some of the large municipal mayors, City of Vancouver, City of Toronto, have been very vocal about the need for financial support to help municipalities that are experiencing a significant decline in, in revenues as a result of the pandemic. What we hear is that their voices have been heard, but we haven't heard of any decisions as of yet. And the impacts affect small municipalities as well, similar to Penetangwishing. So I'm just wondering if you could give us an update from the federal government level, whether there's any decisions will be forthcoming soon on any financial assistance for municipalities?
Thank you, Counselor Badabonkar. I don't, we don't have any specifics yet, but the, I know that the organizations like the FCM for municipalities across Canada have been, have been bringing forward their suggestions around how this could be done. There's no doubt that to restart the economy and get into a robust kind of recovery mode to get things back on track, I mean, I should say that the, the forecast for the third and fourth quarter of 2020, although there's a lot of assumptions, I assume, in that, they do expect that the economy is going to see a pretty good uptick in the third and fourth quarter and we'll, we'll another see a reopening there. And that'll come as a relief to the government because right now, the, the cost of all these income support programs is significant, again, on a scale like we haven't seen before. It's all necessary, but we need to think about what happens after this as well. So, I mean, there have been some just suggestions, for example, like the gas tax fund, right now, about $2 billion is distributed each year through AML for us here in Ontario. So that's, you know, about less than half of what the government collects in excise tax on gasoline. So, you know, we, we could see some room. I mean, I personally am a fan, as is FCM, of the gas tax fund because municipalities know exactly what they're going to get and it's predictable and dependable and you get it each and every year and you can spend it on the things that you need. It's better than some of these competitive programs where you put a lot of work into a great application and only one in 10 get adopted or get approved. So some ideas around that is something our, that parliamentarians are advancing, but no, no details yet, although I would say, just as your comments suggest, look, we, we're going to have to get our heads together on how we can invest in the right spots to make sure our economy gets stronger going forward. And just as a side note on that, there's still, you probably all realize this, but the, this experience is also going to change some of the assumptions we once had around the nature of work, the number of people who will now work from home. You know, businesses are starting to see that, you know, they can actually function in different ways, be it from curbside services and, and online purchases of that sort, to people working in business, in office buildings in, in center towns and such. So we're, we're certainly dealing with a new normal here and that's why we need to keep this conversation open. Municipal governments need to be a big part of that.
Further questions of Bruce? Anyone, members of council? Counselor Cummings, okay, go ahead, Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, worship. And thank you for the presentation, Bruce. I have a question, there have been several, we know that SERB and EI are still being sorted out as far as who qualifies and who doesn't. The problem that I've had, or not myself, but other people have been on telephone calls that have been made, trying to get clarification on who qualifies and who doesn't. People have made application and what happens is an automated system comes on and says, we need more information and then it hangs up. They're having, they're being really frustrated with what's going on because they think they've got it right, but when it comes back, they don't have enough information and then they can't get through to a live body. It's really frustrating for them. So is there any, anything in the works to solve that problem?
Yeah, the, there's no doubt, Counselor Cummings, that the, the system is very much tapped right now, both Canada Revenue that is dealing with the, the SERB inquiries and Service Canada with respect to EI issues. Just last week, they did get some of that sorted out, especially as it related to expectant mums that got, you know, they had initially with SERB, they had to check a box if, if you were pregnant and expecting a baby within a certain number of months, then that put them into the EI stream incorrectly. So now they've got that sorted out. But what I would suggest for anybody who come across a problem like that, tell them to get in touch with us. We do have an email service that we can use that gives us at least about a 48-hour turnaround to get a problem like that solved. It's fair to say that our, my, my staff, both in Midland, Penetangwishing area as well as Arilia, is literally full-time on those kinds of inquiries and EI and SERB probably take up about 80% of that, but we are getting some of these situations solved and the cases that we have with EI are, everything before about April the 25th has now been addressed or corrected. So we're still a few weeks behind, but we will work with them to get those things sorted out. And going forward, I think it's, it's a lot more clear now, they've perfected some of these situations and SERB can still continue. It provides a 16-week benefit, even members who are applying now and are eligible for SERB can still go for a full 16 weeks. And then after that, if they're still eligible for EI, they would switch over to the EI platform.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of council, questions for Bruce? Okay, I see there being none. Bruce, wish to thank you very much for having taken part in our council meeting this evening of bringing us up to tune on federal issues and things that are happening, happening within the country. It's always a pleasure to have you with us and I hope that the next meeting will be under more pleasant circumstances.
Je vous remercie pour tous les succès pour votre rencontre ce soir. Et continuez votre travail pour les gens de Penetangwishing. Merci beaucoup.
Merci beaucoup, Bruce, et puis je préfère certain que nous allons continuer le travail qu'il y a mis en avant de nous autres.
Oui. Bonsoir.
Merci, Bruce.
Okay, council, then that brings us to the adoption of minutes not already confirmed. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Cummings and Counselor Sanima, thank you. And minutes, council, April, adoption of minutes not already confirmed, the committee of the whole, April 22, 2020, special counsel, April 29, 2020, and that the following minutes of council meeting be confirmed and adopted as circulated and those being council, April 22, 2020, and committee of the whole, April 22, 2020, and special counsel, April 29, 2020. Does any member of council have any issues or concern? There being none, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you. Moving on to matters for consideration, A is the North Simcoe Family Health Team Virtual Physician Program Funding Request. And could I have a mover and a seconder on that, please, so we can get it on the floor? Nobody wants to move it? Nobody wants to second it? Deputy Mayor and Counselor Levy, thank you. So the North Simcoe Family Health Unit Virtual Physician Program Funding Request is that the report, 2020-10 regarding a $10,000 one-time funding request from the North Simcoe Family Health Team for a virtual physician pilot program be received and that option two, to fund the request using non-taxation funds from the town's Community Development Fund Reserve be approved. And so it is open for debate and questions or concerns. Does anyone wish to address this issue? Counselor Badabonkar.
Thank you, worship. So we had a discussion about this at our section meeting and we had a couple of questions that we posed to staff and staff were able to get the answers from the North Simcoe Family Health Team. And I just wanted to, just to clarify for members of council, because it was certainly a question in my mind with respect to the impact of doctors' billing. So the physician that will be working in this program, they, they bill OHIP and they, they keep the funds where the North Simcoe Health Team, they are responsible to pay the admin support of this program. And you can see on the second paragraph under financial implications that the cost of to run it on an annual basis is about $170,000. And that, that pays for the one full-time equivalent admin support, full-time equivalent clinical nurse, the lease, equipment and supplies. So it is, it's a program that could serve about 2,000 patients that are currently not rostered with, with any family physician now. I think that, that if it proves successful, then I think that they have a choice, they have a chance, I should say, to be funded from the Ministry of Health. So I think there's some benefit here in terms of the town providing this one-time funding and I would emphasize one-time funding as a pilot so that they can demonstrate to the Ministry of Health that this is a, this is a viable program. And I think it'll fit a need within our, within our community and so I would, I'm going to be supporting it when it comes to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Badabonkar, and, and I agree with you wholeheartedly that this is, I believe, a good situation here that we're looking at and a need to help a lot of people, patients out there that do not have a physician. It would certainly be beneficial to them and I think that on the whole, you're absolutely correct, that it, it could be a very good program and yes, we're looking at one-time funding to get this thing up and running and trying to see it through and hopefully it's going to be the success that I think it's going to be. So any other comments or concerns? Madam Deputy Mayor, you're still unmute?
Yes, I certainly support this endeavor. There are a lot of individuals in our communities that do not have doctor service. So this is certainly a start towards that, as was mentioned, upwards of 2,000 people who do not have a doctor and this is only going to get worse. We have doctors in our community that are ready to retire. Well, I think this is a good pilot project and certainly hope that council supports this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Badabonkar? No, Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say, I think it's a great idea that they're thinking about doing this. But it always brings me back to the point of how much more should we be funding for the provincial government? It's not really our job. It's not really our mandate. If it's a good idea and it's going to be funded, I can't understand why the province wouldn't do it ahead of time. If they need a year to give it a try and see if it's going to run, I, I don't know why the North Simcoe Health Team wouldn't fund it themselves if it's going to be a moneymaker. So as much as I agree with the fact that it would always be great to have more doctors around town, I, I cannot support putting our tax dollars into it.
Might point out, Counselor LaRose, that this is not going to be funded from the tax roll. And the other thing is that the health unit itself that is looking at putting this out are not for profit, so that they are not in a position to do the funding themselves. This is why they've approached the form units, validies and mostly persons nations to assist in the funding. So with that, is there anyone else who wishes to comment? There being none, then I will call the vote, all those in favor. Opposed? And it is carried. Okay, moving on to presentation and consideration of report committee of the whole. Committee of the whole report, April 22, 2020, that the recommendations contained within committee of the whole report related to the Recreation and Community Services Section be approved. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor LaRose and Counselor Sanima, all in favor? That is carried. Recommendation contained within committee of the whole report related to the Planning and Development Services Section be approved. Mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Clu, all in favor? That is carried. That the recommendations contained within committee of the whole report related to the Transportation and Environmental Services Section be approved. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Mayat, Counselor Levy, all in favor? That is carried. And finally, that the recommendations contained within committee of the whole report related to the related to the Finance and Corporate Services Section be approved. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Vodivalkar, Counselor Cummings, all in favor? And that is carried. Motions of which
Your worship, if I don't, if I apologize to interrupt, but I believe you skipped over 8B. And just wanted to bring that to your attention.
And that would be you, Mr. CAO. So yes, I apologize for that. And we are to have a verbal report from the Chief Administrative Officer, the COVID-19 Situation Update. Sorry about that, Jeff. Go.
No worries, your worship. I, I realize it was kind of hidden in there a little bit under the, the other large section. So thank you, worship. I just wanted to give a brief update for council and the public with respect to any material changes and impacts since my last update on April 22nd. I'm going to try to summarize any changes that have had a direct impact on municipal services and leave the federal components as has already been articulated by our MP. So there's a lot that has happened from April 27th, essentially or April 22nd to today. Right from the province releasing guiding principles to open up the province, the workplace safety guidelines, certain businesses being permitted to open up May 4th. And then further restrictions eased on retail, May 6th. Late last week, the province opened some provincial parks and conservation reserves. And then most recently, the province extended the declaration provincially as well as the emergency orders through to June 2nd. And then as recent as today, we were notified by our MVP's office through you, your worship, that there will be an opportunity this weekend for marinas to start opening up. Locally at the municipality, as council and the public is aware, April 29th, we presented the continuity plan for the municipality for the month of May. The following day, we operationalized and implemented reduced work weeks, and those took effect May 4th. And as recent as late last week, we formed a return to normal working group with cross-departmental representation. And that working group essentially has been tasked with focusing on the how versus the when. And by the end of the month, we are looking for a report back with input from all of staff, focusing on the staff to staff, but also the staff to public interactions. And our HR team is also participating on a North Simcoe working group as well. And then last Thursday, as councils are aware, our harbor master seasonal contract position started. And that position, that individual has started the preparation at the town wharf. So departmentally, if I go through each of our four sections briefly, in roads, they are, we'll be wrapping up spring cleanup operations over the next week. They have started the asphalt resurfacing program this week, and that's anticipated to be completed by the end of May. And then the regular maintenance operations of road, sanitary sewer and drainage networks are happening on a weekly basis. With water, with the water department, they're completing their regular station checks, sampling and maintenance duties weekly, which are regulatory. And they are continuing their fire hydrant inspection and maintenance program across the distribution system with the valve exercising program to be completed thereafter. Waste water, again, completing a lot of regulatory station checks, sampling and maintenance duties weekly. And most recently, they had their, they had land applied a substantial amount of winter stored bio solids last week through our contractor, who is the region of Veronia. And administratively and public works continuing the day-to-day operations remotely and in the office on an as-needed basis. From our Recreation and Community Services perspective, the ecology garden, all existing plot renters have been contacted twice with the opportunity to renew. 10 of 18 have secured and taken the municipality up on that offer with the intent that the garden will be ready to receive those individuals this Friday with, as everyone can appreciate, revised and new protocols. And this, and staff will be advertising the availability of the eight remaining plots for the community to hopefully leverage. With respect to the wharf, as I alluded to, the harbor master was onboarded last Thursday and has been working aggressively towards preparing the physical space for operations, which includes setting up the new launch ramp kiosk that commenced the last fall. In addition, staff have been in contact with our third-party service provider to begin works on the installation of the docking system. But as everyone is aware, due to the higher water levels and, and that's expected and anticipated to increase through the season, the extension of the anchoring systems, the chains are needed before the docks can be installed. So we're hoping that that work will commence in the very near future. And that the contractor for the reconstruction project has been on site and is set to waterproof and pave the surface next week, once the, once the weather hopefully is behind us. And, and of course, no snow. In addition, staff have turned our minds to physical distancing and the implementation of new launching procedures to ensure the staff and public safety. Guidelines have been released by the province as well as through Boating Ontario. So certainly looking to stay aligned with those. We continue to liaise with our neighboring municipalities to ensure as much alignment as possible, while also exploring mechanisms and protocols to ensure that physical distancing can realistically be adhered to in terms of access on the docks so that we're not inviting folks down there that perhaps don't need to be there at certain points in time. With respect to the observation deck, the deck is going to be brought over in the coming weeks to be stored and secured at its usual location off of McGibben, McGibbin Point. However, the access to the deck will be restricted, given the circumstances. All of our seniors, if I, if I switch gears here a little bit to seniors, all the seniors that have registered for town programs in the past have been contacted by staff to check in and, and inform them and advise them of the Antero 211 resource. And that seems to have gone over well with, with our community. With respect to the museum, one of the big things, aside from regular functions, staff are working on collaborating with our neighbors to plan a virtual candidate day celebration, given, given our circumstances. And the big thing with respect to parks is that grass cutting began over the last, over the last three weeks. Planning and development, switching gears, building, the building department's continuing to conduct inspections with some exceptions as it pertains or as it relates to occupied buildings. And of course, are reviewing any permit submissions that do come in. There are a few instances that the province have since clarified with respect to a homeowner applying and doing their own work, sheds and docks, where a contractor is not required or not needed. And some other exciting technology news is that we are set to host our first virtual committee of adjustment meeting the end of this month on May 25th. That's 7 o'clock PM. So staff have, have done a lot of testing with that committee and are set to go. With respect to finance and corporate services, our last section, fire, continuing the regular day-to-day operations remotely in the office as needed. And of course, emergency services are ready to respond at the flick of a switch as needed. Finance are working, are working remotely and spending a great deal of time, probably more than ever anticipated in the office to ensure that finance and IT functions continue as normal. Just a few interesting stats that our treasurer has polled that we thought would be a benefit for council and the public. And the first one is our 2020 interim billings. The total of our interim billings is $8.2 million and have been paid 83% in full. The remaining 17% is broken down with 7% relating to the pre-authorized payment program. So there is always a timing delay there. But, but on the pre-authorized payment program, there's a high degree of certainty that that's going to be collected. And the remaining 10% is essentially unpaid, which is slightly higher than previous year-to-date figures. But all in all, I think a good news story. Particularly when I hear from some of our neighbors, bigger municipalities that have a substantially less amount of property tax payments than, than what we're experiencing. Our revenue losses that have incurred since mid-March to mid-May from penalties, licenses, permits, transit, ICE rentals, as well as education programs is shy of $47,000. And our actual cost containment for the same period is shy of $77,000, as has been reported in the past. And as you'll see, our Director of Finance report further later on in the committee of the whole agenda. And those really, majority of that relates to salaries and wages and benefits with additional savings anticipated from some of the corporate budget items such as training and development, mileage, office supplies, hydro, fuel, etc. So staff in finance are continuing to monitor the financial situation. It is going to continue to be a priority. And as I alluded to before, there's a report later on this evening that our Director of Finance will speak to. Corporate services and human resources, health and safety, continuing regular day-to-day operations remotely and in the office on an as-needed basis. And we're also working through our corporate continuity plan for the month of June, while we're eagerly awaiting what the province announces tomorrow regarding Phase One of opening the province back up. So just in summary, your worship, staff and the public have adjusted to the now normal. But we continue to work towards what the new normal might look like. And, and I must say, staff, as well as the public, have quickly transitioned back to our regular business for the most part. As the province starts to open up sectors and services, our continuity plan will evolve and adjust accordingly. And we've already seen some of that since my report to council and open session back on April 29th, pertaining to marinas and development, parks, gatherings, etc. So as that evolves with the province, our continuity plan and our staffing plan will also evolve. As I alluded to, we've started turning our minds to, sorry, not as I alluded to. Staff have started turning our minds to what support role the town can play with businesses. We anticipate bringing a staff report forward in June, which, which will have a heavy reliance on assistance from EDCNS. I know staff have already had some conversation with EDCNS as well as North Simcoe Community Futures. And those conversations will continue. I think EDCNS is doing a lot of great work. And, you know, we want to align ourselves with, with what's going on, while also recognizing the town has some control over elements that EDCNS may not. And then lastly, your worship, I just want to reiterate that staff continues doing an excellent job, providing a high degree of service excellence in whatever environment has been asked of them. Kudos to everyone. You know, the operations continue to proceed and be maintained as a result of, of everyone throughout the organization. So with that, your worship, I'd be happy to take any questions or, or comments that council might have.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff. Members of council, any questions through to the CAO? Counselor Cummings.
Thank you, worship. Through to you, Jeff. The rumor has it that the provincial government is going to open marinas, launch ramps, parks, etc. on Saturday. The official announcement won't come till tomorrow, but the rumor has it that that's going to happen. How, how fast are we able to respond to that?
Great question. Through your worship to Counselor Cummings, we've had, we've had great dialogue internally with respect to what this looks like. Our original estimate, when we brought the harbor master back in late last week, was that it would take him a period of at least two weeks to get things prepared and in a position to look at potentially reopening. And that was just kind of a ballpark guess. We have not yet onboarded our summer seasonal staff down at the marina. But we have devised a plan that is pretty close to being complete today that we'll, we'll see some potential redeployment opportunities within the organization as well as having to bring in some of our seasonal positions. We anticipate that, you know, we are waiting in large part for our third party to bring our dock system over. So we're, we're certainly aiming for next weekend. But there's a number of different things that through Sherry and her team, they're having to wrap their head around. So I don't want to promise next weekend. But certainly, you know, we hope within the next few weeks, we're going to be in a position. And certainly aggressively are pushing this to try to open as soon as possible. Recognizing the role that our staff are going to play down at the marina is going to shift quite, quite significantly from our perspective in terms of what they have accustomed, what they've been accustomed to. And as it pertains to what they now have to kind of turn their minds to as it pertains to physical distancing and, you know, the width of the dock, etc. So the, the short answer through, through your worship to Counselor Cummings is we're, we're working on it. We're trying to get it to open as soon as possible. But our hope would be in, in the next two weeks that we've onboarded all of the staff we need and we're fully functional. Between now and then, we may be in a position to be partially functional. Part of, part of are the discussions we've had in North Simcoe is, and, and countywide is a little bit of frustration that we're not getting a lot of heads up. And so part of the role that we're going to play is to communicate to the public that while, while the province has permitted us to open things up, we're working as aggressive as we possibly can. But recognize, you know, we just were given the green light to start preparing, you know, last week. So hopefully that answers Counselor Cummings' question.
Supplemental, your worship?
Yes.
Jeff, just to, just to look at, even looking at the launch ramp being open for the weekend, if in fact, the announcement is true. Is that a possibility or not?
Through your worship to Counselor Cummings, the Director of Rec and I had this conversation as well today, and certainly our North Simcoe group has as well. And part of the challenge, there are some challenges with that with respect to not having the dock system in that, that's relied on for folks to launch as well as the protocols and the responsibility that we have from amino as well as the protocols and the responsibility that we have from a municipality to ensure that it's not just a free-for-all down there and that there is some sort of composure with that service. So, you know, depending on, you know, I think, you know, I think from our perspective and certainly North Simcoe's perspective is, this weekend probably is a little bit, you know, we probably would be a little bit overly optimistic to think that we would be able to open things this weekend. But in particular, you know, we would strive, as it relates to the launch ramps specifically, you know, our goal is to, you know, even if we have to look at maybe opening that sooner than the war for the marina component, you know, even look at that potentially for next weekend. But, you know, staffing, it's going to rely heavily on the staffing component and the staffing end of things.
Okay. Counselor Vadiwankar, I believe I saw you had your...
Yeah, thank you, worship. So my questioning or comment was along the same lines as Counselor Cummings. And your worship, as you know, I did send you an email with some information and a request to bring it to the command team to start the process to open up the launching ramp. And because I had heard from members of the community that they were interested in starting to launch their boats and taking advantage of the start of the fishing season. So, your worship, I thank you for taking my request. And I want to commend the command team and our department head, Sherry, for the information that was sent out about how the town has started the preparation. Because I don't believe that we would be as far along as we would if we had not started when we did. You know, I agree with Counselor Cummings. I think the launching ramp certainly can be opened up as soon as it can. But I just wanted to say thank you for addressing it because it's certainly something of interest to the fishers in our community who want to get out on the water. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you, Counselor Vadiwankar. As I might point out, naturally, I've had quite a number of repairers that have come to me about the launching ramp as well, and particularly some people who have cottages up in the islands that are wanting to get to their cottages and whatnot. But explaining to them that we have to go through the hoops and the loops and make sure that we have covered all our bases and not get caught up in some liability. And so as the CIO has pointed out, and our Director of Recreation, who are working on it diligently, and then hopefully maybe something comes about that we can actually get the launch ramp open a little sooner than the war, if that's a possibility, I'm sure we will do that. But for the time being, it's definitely not possible for that, any part of it, to be done this coming weekend. Further questions of the CIO? There being none, then we will move on. So we've already done 9-1. So we will go on to 10, motions of which notice has previously been given, there are none. Notices of motion, there are none. Consideration of bylaws. And bylaws are 2021, a bylaw to amend the town's procedural, bylaw 2019-25, to allow for electronic participation for advisory committees where a state of emergency has been declared. 2020-22 being a bylaw to deem a lot on a registered plan, law 51, 52, 59, and 60, registered plan 1521. And 2020-23 being a bylaw to stop up and close part of the original road allowance between laws 41, 42, to 50, and 51 on registered plan 1521. And more particularly described as Part 2 on reference plan 51R-34344 in the town of Penetanggushin, that the council of the town of Penetanggushin introduced the following bylaws, and that bylaws be read a first time and deemed to be read a second time, a third time, and carried. Mover and a seconder, please. Counselor LaRose and Counselor Mayat, all in favor? That is carried. The question period from media and the public. Again, you don't know that we have any media or public, but we know that anyone who has any questions pertaining to the meeting can send them by email to our clerk. And announcements and inquiries. Anyone have any announcement or inquiries? No, I do actually have, I guess it's a both combination inquiry and an announcement. And probably going through to Brian Murray. Brian, have you been made aware of a traffic situation that might take place on Edward Street Friday because of the Cancer Support Center? I understand that they have sold over 500 potted geraniums, and the people will be picking them up. And apparently they have hired a police officer off-duty who is very involved with the Cancer Support Center and has volunteered to direct traffic. But are you aware of that situation?
Thank you. Through to your worship. No, I wasn't aware of that, but I can definitely contact my contact at the Cancer Support Center. And if there's anything that they need, whether it's a road occupancy permit or referring them to the appropriate documentation, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay. Could you perhaps then, Brian, touch base with Sandra Baldwin?
Yes, I can do that. Yeah.
Okay. Any other further announcements or inquiries? There being none, then we will move on to the confirmation bylaw. And the confirmation bylaw 2024 be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Mover and a seconder? Counselor Levy and Counselor Vadiwankar, all in favor? Carried, thank you. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Levy? We are adjourned. Well, we will now move on to our committee of the whole. So I need a moment to switch to that meeting. Okay, we are into the committee of the whole, meeting Wednesday, May 13, 2020. And we will call the meeting to order and approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover and a seconder for approval of the agenda? Counselor Cummings and Counselor LaRose. And the committee of the whole agenda, May 13, 2020, recommended action that the committee of the whole agenda for May 13, 2020 be approved as presented. All in favor? That is carried. And moving on to presentations and delegations, we have none. Or the declaration of pecuniary interest, if anyone so has one, do it now at the proper, appropriate time. Presentations and delegations, there are none. The council information package, council information package, recommended action that the council information package dated May 13, 2020, having been given due consideration, be received for information. A mover and a seconder? Counselor Vadiwankar and Deputy Mayor Dubo, all in favor? Thank you. Moving on to sections of services, transportation and environmental services. And then I pass that on to Counselor Mayat.
Thank you, your worship. Matter of consideration, awarding the RFP 2020-023 Vehicle Replacement, RSD 2020-11. Recommended for action, that council approve the awarding bid opportunity number 2020-023 for light vehicle replacement to Hannah Ford with supply and delivery of three fleet vehicles in the total price of $112,243, horse plus HST. This is something that we were looking at, but I'm going to let maybe our director from the TND talk about it, what the process was on that. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The town partnered with the County of Simcoe on a joint light vehicle procurement opportunity. That was spearheaded by the County of Simcoe. Every year they go out for procurement opportunities for various equipment and vehicles. And they offer this to member municipalities for them to jump on board and participate. This year we had three vehicles being tendered out. One from Public Works, one from RCS, and the other from the planning department. All three bids were recommended to Hannah Ford. They met all of the requirements. They were the lowest bid received. And that is what we're recommending tonight for approval.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions to the director? Go ahead, Counselor Cummings.
Just a comment. When I asked the treasurer to look at possible fleet fleet purchases, this is exactly what I was looking for, Brian. You know, where we get together and look at departmental needs and look at how we can put them all together and get some nice bids for this. And I think this is a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, your Counselor Cummings. Any more questions? Can I have a mover on this? And a seconder? Counselor LaRose, Counselor Levy? All in favor? And pass. Thank you. Item 2. Procurement exception for the electronic bidding, ENG 2020-08. Recommend for action that the exemption clause identified in subsection 8.2 in bylaw 2018-12, being a bylaw to establish procurement policy for the corporation of the town of Penetanggushin to be approved to allow electronic submission for all procurement opportunity, including requests for proposal and requests for tenders. And that the electronic submission more clearly defined as Section 5-11 of a bylaw 2018-12, excepted to allow electronic submission and all procurement opportunity until December 31st, 2020. And furthermore, the electronic submission will only be permitted in accordance of the bylaw 2018-1212 by utilizing the previous approved electronic bidding web. Any questions on this or any discussion or? Can I have a mover on this? Counselor Cummings and Counselor Levy, all in favor? Pass. Thank you. Okay, referral for upcoming, whoops, wrong mouth. Okay, referral for upcoming agenda for staff at the Transportation and Environment Section. Endorse the following additional and existing referral to upcoming agenda and staff. We have two items on our shooter agenda, the Church Street Parking and the Pearl Streets No Removal and Site Registration. Do we have anything we want to add or delete? Can I have a, go ahead, the CIO?
Sorry, Counselor Mayat, to interrupt. I just wanted to add some context for the Church Street Parking item. You'll see that the date has been amended from Q4 of 2019 to Q3 2020. We were, the report is ready to go. We were prepared to bring it on April 22nd. But the belief and the thought from staff through, you know, through discussion is that, you know, this is one that the public or members of the public have been engaged with. And so we didn't think it was a fair opportunity for, to the public to bring this forward via an electronic meeting where they can't really participate. So I just really wanted to articulate to council and committee why that date, why that report hasn't come forward yet. It was ready to come in April. But we didn't, from a staff perspective, didn't feel it was fair to the public given their involvement on this particular matter. But of course, happy to take direction from committee or council should it be the will of council otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. CIO. Do we have any questions for CIO or about that item? No? Okay, can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor LaRose, seconded by Counselor Sanama, all in favor? Any opposed? Pass. Question period from media and the public, we don't. So your worship, I'm turning it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayat. We then will move on to Section V of the Recreation and Community Services, and I pass it to Counselor LaRose.
Your worship, just before Counselor LaRose starts, am I incorrect? Did we lose the deputy mayor at our meeting?
Well, she's not showing up on my screen.
Yeah.
Maybe having a technical difficulty, I don't know.
No, I don't see her on the screen at all.
We may have lost her. I did sort of see the number and I couldn't figure out who was missing that quickly, but...
So we will carry on, and maybe Madam Clerk, you could see if you can contact the deputy mayor to see if there's some issues or problems.
Okay, yeah. She'll be able to rejoin if she just gets back on. She's not kicked out or anything, so it should be, okay, I'll see if I can contact her.
Now, before I go to Counselor LaRose, I see that Counselor Levy has her request to speak. Counselor Levy? Hello?
Yeah, here I am. I just wanted to say I got bumped out. And I got back in very quickly, but that happened to me as well. So maybe she's just sorting her way around how to get back to the invite.
Yeah, that's fine. She'll come back. Okay, Counselor LaRose, if you would?
Thank you, your worship. We're moving on to 7A. We have matters for consideration. We have two of them to deal with tonight. The first one is a request from the Georgian Queen. The recommended action that the summer birthage fee dated July 31st, 2020 is outlined in bylaw 2019-31 be deferred till October 31st, 2020. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder to get this on before we start to discuss this. We have a move by Counselor Sanama and seconded by Counselor Levy. Do we have any questions or comments about this? I didn't know if everybody was comfortable, or did we want Sherry to give us an update on this? What's counsel feeling? Counselor Vadiwankar?
Thank you, Counselor Rose. I read the report, and I think the recommendation is quite reasonable. And I support it. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that needed to make a comment? If not, we'll call for the vote then. All in favor? And that is carried. Moving on to item 2, it is a request from the ship's company that they also are looking for a waiver request. And the recommended action that the annual fee of $896 plus HST for the current rental period with the ship's company as per bylaw 2019-15B waived. And that the ship's company continue to pay the hydro fees incurred at the garage located at 38 Chatham Street. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to get this on? Moved by Counselor Mayat, seconded by Counselor Levy. And does anybody have any questions about this? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. My question was just, the $896, is that for the garage and the docking?
I believe in the wording of their contract that that is for the docking spaces only.
And what do they pay for the garage space?
Well, maybe that is incorrect. Maybe it is part of it. I'm going to ask our Director of Rec to clear that up for us.
Thank you. Through Counselor LaRose, to Counselor Cummings. The fee is for the garage and the space of the war as well.
Do we have any other questions? Do we have any other questions? Seeing none, and we'll welcome our Deputy Mayor back. Well, maybe not. I thought she was there for a minute, but if not, we'll call for the vote on that. All in favor? And that is carried. Oh, there was one opposed, sorry. It was still carried. Moving on down to our referral section, we have two items, same two that have been around for a little while, outsourcing our day camp and our PMCC. Is there any of those we want to see taken off? Probably not. Is there anything anybody would like to be added? Seeing none, we will call for the vote on that. All in favor of leaving those referral items?
So I just need a seconder.
For that as well, all right, we'll take a mover, Counselor Vadabankur, seconded by Counselor Cummings. Again, we'll go for all in favor. And that is carried. With that, your worship, we're passing it back to you.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose, and with that, we'll move on to 9C, which is the Planning and Community Development Services, and I will pass it on to Deputy Mayor Dubois.
Your worship, I lost internet for whatever reason. And I've had to go to my iPad and I've lost my agenda. So I would ask Counselor Clu if she could run this part of our committee.
Counselor Clu, are you prepared to go?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Okay. So first on our consent agenda is Memo Regarding Planning and Community Development Department Capital Studies Update. And the recommended action is that the following consent agenda items, having been given due consideration, be received for information. Are there any questions on this item, or should we get a bit of a brief summary from our Director of Planning? Counselor Cummings?
Thank you. I would like a brief update from our Director of Planning, please.
Very good. Andrea?
Thank you, Counselor Clu, through you to all of Council. So if you'll recall when our last meeting and we had a report from the Director of Public Works with respect to our capital projects and those that are all within the Essential Services category. For a planning point of view, it gets a little bit different. A lot of the projects that are on part of Planning Department's capital budget for 2020 are reports and studies that we're conducting, and some of them are a result of grants. So from Brian's report, a lot of these studies were highlighted as being yellow, as in you can proceed, but just with some caution. So we've had some internal discussion with respect to the status of some of our projects. The Community Improvement Plan, as you'll see in the memo, is about 85% complete. It's nearing completion, and so trying to determine how best to move ahead, especially with some of the statutory requirements, such as public meetings that still need to be held on some of these projects. So for those reasons, we just wanted to give Council an update on the status of those capital projects and bring to your attention sort of amended work plans because of COVID-19 and for just, you know, scheduling purposes. I think that's about it. I would take any questions if Council has any with respect to that memo.
Thank you, Andrea. Other than any questions for the Director? Seeing none? Is there a mover? Counselor Mayat, seconder, Counselor LaRose? Thank you, all in favor? That item has passed. Over to Matters for Consideration is one item. It's the Site Plan Approval SPA 03-2019 for 92 Robert Street West. The report is PL-2020-13. And the recommended action is that the site plan approval is granted for the property at 92 Robert Street West for 132 square meter addition to the existing building, subject to final engineering design approval from the Director of Public Works. This is the garage that's been on Robert Street West for a number of years. This has been in the works for a very long time for them. It's relatively a small addition. Andrea, is there anything you want to add to this item? No, nothing? Any questions from Councilors, Councilmembers? Seeing none? Is there a mover? Counselor Levy, seconder, Counselor Vadabankur, and all in favor? That item has carried. And now we're to referrals to upcoming agenda. Excuse me. Let the Planning and Community Development Services Section endorse the following additional existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. There are two items, the vacant municipal property inventory update. I believe this is our item this evening. And graffiti policy, which is a TBD item. We're just going to leave this here for now. Are there any changes to be made? Seeing none? Is there a mover? Oh, sorry, Counselor Cummings, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just wondering why the graffiti policy is TBD.
I'll turn that to the Director of Planning.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clu, through you to Counselor Cummings. I think it was, it just needs to be updated. I think, as I reported at our last meeting, our intention was to bring this probably to our June 10th meeting. So it should, it'll either be quarter two, 2020, is my intention to have in there.
Thank you. As long as we have quarter two, I'd like to get that sooner than later. Thank you.
Great. I think the Clerk can also make a note of that as well. There are no other changes. Do we have a mover and a seconder already? No. Do we have a mover?
Counselor Clu, I believe, I see.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Mayat, you're right.
Request to speak.
He's way off in my corner here. I'll look down here. Counselor Mayat.
That's funny, I'm in the center of mine, but anyway, no, I want to bring this up as quickly as we can, like up on Kerr Drive. A lot of people saying some of those graffiti that have been there for over a year and we have done nothing. Are we painting them? What are we going to do? Like something's got to be done quickly with this graffiti, bring this up as soon as we can, because now even our street signs are painted, like the water where the, the water tower is at, I'm paying drive. Those graffiti's been there for over a year, nothing's been done, so we got to get on this here quickly, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mayat. Counselor LaRose?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, do we have any sort of graffiti bylaw on the books right now that anybody knows of?
It's my understanding that there's a policy, but Director of Planning probably has more on that.
Through Counselor Clu to Counselor Rose, that's correct. It is a policy that deals with graffiti that's placed on public property. We don't have any rules with respect to graffiti on private lands, and that's part of what we're proposing to do with the update to our Property Standards Bylaw is to provide some regulations and enforcement with respect to private lands, graffiti, or tagging that's happened. But the policy that we're using right now deals with public lands and, you know, the tagging of street signs or mailboxes, what have you.
Counselor Rose? Thank you. I just wonder then if we do have a policy for public stuff. According to the other two counselors and ourselves, as we've all seen, we have a number of graffitied items that are on municipal property, municipal signs. Is there a reason why we haven't dealt with them?
Director of Planning, I don't know if this is a question for you, but.
Thank you, Counselor Clu. Again, so I don't know these specific instances about graffiti. I mean, we know we had an instance a couple of years ago where large swaths of the municipality were tagged and and so in each instance, the policy requires that these be reported, and so I just, I can't confirm whether or not some of these have been reported. We like to think that we can see all the graffiti that's been put out there, but there could be some instances where somebody thinks somebody else told the town about it and didn't, and so we maybe never noticed or never saw it. So I don't want to speak to a specific instance, but our policy does speak to a fairly immediate removal of graffiti once it's identified and reported to the municipality.
Okay, great. I'm going to move along with a mover and a seconder, because I know we'll have a more fulsome discussion when this item comes back to us already next month. Was there a mover for these referrals? Counselor Levy, a seconder? Looking, oh, sorry, Counselor Sanema, all in favor? That has carried. Thank you very much. Question period from media and public. Seeing none, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
There I am. I will pass it on to Counselor Vadabankur.
Thank you, worship. Members of Council, just referring you to the Finance and Corporate Services Section portion of the agenda. Excuse me, we want to have one item under the Consent Agenda. And it's pertaining to the 2020 Year-to-Date Financial Summary and COVID-19 Financial Impacts Update. At section meeting, we thought, rather than deal with this item as a consent item, that there's lots of worthwhile information in this particular report that we would ask our Treasurer to provide a summary to members of the, members of Council and members of the public who are watching this evening. So with your permission, your worship, I'll ask the Treasurer to provide a summary of her report. Madam Treasurer?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. And to Council, I will present a summary of the Year-to-Date Financial Summary. And within that report, I have included a new section, COVID-19 Financial Impacts Update. So I'll continue to report on both our actual versus budget year-to-date financial information as well as the COVID financial impacts year-to-date. Certainly, they are becoming more known as time goes on and as due dates pass, and we can, we can figure out certainly what's, what some of the actual financial impacts are as well. Obviously, we continue to project into the future on continued financial impacts. So just to summarize the report in front of you, so year-to-date, four months, as at April 30th, we have presented a summary of the actual versus budget year-to-date financial statements. Overall, the timing of all these revenues and expenses year-to-date are under by 1.15 million. About $800,000 of that is under tax-supported departments. And the other $353,000 is due to our four rate-supported departments, the Wharf, the Building Department, Water and Waste Water Departments. So mainly, the actual versus budget difference of 1.15 million is mainly due to budget timing differences where we phase over the 12 months when the collection and spending of revenues and expenses will occur. So it could be due to some budget timing differences, such as delayed invoices that we receive. Typically, we receive utility billing, specifically hydro, very delayed receipt of that on a month-to-month basis. Our shared contracted services are somewhat delayed. So we're not actually comparing apples to apples in terms of the actual spending and when we budget to receive those, those invoices. There's also delayed cost of living increases, as well as prepaid insurance that we haven't allocated yet. And also on top of those normal operational differences, budget versus actual. Of course, on top of that, we also have COVID-19 financial impacts impacting the timing of our revenues collected and our expenses paid as we compare it to our year-to-date budget. So as far as that's related to operating, so as far as capital, our capital spending variance is $674,000 year-to-date as well, four months of actual expenditures versus our four-month phased capital budget on how we anticipated the first four months of the year would go in terms of capital spending. Mainly, that difference of $674,000 is due to the legislated restrictions put in place that delayed some of those capital projects and continue to delay them. As well, it's also related to invoices that we haven't received yet for work that has indeed been done in the first four months of the year. In addition, obviously, based on the Director of Public Works report, last report related to capital projects, there's also been the deferral of a number of those projects totaling about $284,000 as well. So obviously, the year-to, year-to-date variance is impacted by, by many, many reasons. In terms of the COVID-19 financial implications, what I've done as part two to the Financial Implications update further to my last report, the preliminary scenarios that were presented on April 22nd. And if you recall, there was Scenario 1, Scenario 2, and Scenario 3 at 5% impact, sorry, 10% impact on our revenues with a 5% cost containment. Scenario 2 was a 25% impact on revenues with a 10% cost containment. And Scenario 3 was 50% impact on revenues with a 15% cost containment. And again, hard, hard to quantify. Certainly in the beginning stages when we're estimating and continue to estimate and forecast. But as time goes on, some things are, are known. So in terms of this second update on attachment, attachment number two, there is a summary of my my Part 2 COVID Financial Implications Update, and again, use the same three scenarios with 10% revenues impacted, 25% and 50%. A little bit, a little bit more aggressive in terms of the implications to be, rather, rather to be I guess, less conservative in, in our implications. But I'm, I'm looking at those impacts on the annual budget. So if, if all of the revenues that are impact, going to be impacted by, excuse me, the pandemic, if the annual budget is impacted by 10%, 25% or 50%, here's what we would be looking at in terms of projected revenue losses. And they range from 127,000 to 636,000, Scenario 1, 2, and 3. Certainly, the cost containment efforts that were originally projected on April 22nd, we have implemented more cost containment measures. And the impact, the financial impact of those cost containments and resulting savings are known. And they range from Scenario 1 to, 1, 2, and 3. Because they've already been put into place, they're all the same, so those cost containments are $324,000. And there are some unknown but anticipated cost savings in terms of mileage, office supplies, fuel, hydro, training and conferences that range from about $61,000 to $184,000 in additional cost containment. So overall, our second analysis of these financial implications, it puts us in, with all the cost containment efforts we've already put in place already, it puts us in a better light, a better forecast. looking out four months to an estimated net deficit of zero in two scenarios and up to $128,000 net deficit in Scenario 3. And if you'll remember, the last preliminary overview that I presented at April 22nd, those potential net deficits range from about $33,000 to $300,000. So in terms of those purposeful cost containment efforts, our projections, looking forward, we look to be in a better net position. But obviously, things are changing every week, every month, and we will continue to report on ongoing financial implications.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any questions of the Treasurer? Looking around, oh, Counselor Sanamah, please go ahead.
Thanks very much, Counselor Vadabunkur, for, for carrying fabulous report. Thank you very much. The only, only question I have is with the savings on the salaries, like looking at over a four-month period. Did, have you, or have you considered playing with the numbers if it was only like a one, two, or three-month period that we were saving those funds and seeing what, like it, how it would affect the bottom line? Because that's, that's obviously our biggest way to save money. And, you know, with, with things starting to open up again, I doubt that we'll be saving that, those full funds for the full four months.
Through you, to Counselor Sanamah. Yeah, I mean, in terms of, in terms of the impact on, obviously, the duration, which we, we don't know. So I did put the, the, the monthly savings and decided to go with the four months because we did, we did indeed incur some savings with cost containment as early as March, with some contracts that were ended early and some that were geared up to start early April. So as, as you look back to March, April, May, June, my four months could, could, you know, could potentially end the end of June, or let's say mid-July. But certainly, I could look at other, other duration scenarios. I could maybe change that up next report, if you'd like.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any other questions? Supplemental? Okay. Is that a, okay. Madam Deputy Mayor and then Counselor LaRose?
Thank you. Carrie, a great report. I just wanted to clarify comments that our CAO made in reference to taxes paid to date. Did I understand that that was approximately 80% of taxes did come through in their last payment schedule? Is that correct?
Yes, through you to Deputy, Deputy Mayor Dubo. Yes. So I'll just get my numbers here handy. The 83% that the CAO spoke to is based on our total interim billing of about almost $8.2 million. So that would be the installment, the first interim, our, our total interim billing is in two installments, the first one being due the end of February and the second one being due the end of April. So when you look at that total interim billing of almost $8.2 million, we did look in detail today to see how much of, of the 2020 taxes, interim billing taxes have been paid to date, and it is 83%. With the other 7% being not due yet because it's on a pre-authorized payment program, which leaves 10% unpaid. Historically, we're usually running around between, I think, 6% to 7% in, in arrears. So I'm assuming that the jump to the 10% would be those that are taking advantage of Council's decision to waive penalty and interest thereby, you know, allowing them to pay any, anytime prior to July 31st.
Very good. Thank you very much for that explanation. I think that that's a good news story for sure, as the CAO alluded to. So thank you for that.
Madam Deputy Mayor, Counselor LaRose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, it's glad to see that it's not all doom and gloom. Two things, even though it was under your matters for consideration, is there anything that Finance Committee had looked at that they may require Council to do? Is there anything we need to be doing to make sure that we stay on this path? And the other question I had was, if we do stay on this path of collecting most of our stuff, will, will we be taking our capital projects that we were going to defer? Would we be bringing them back?
Thank you, Counselor. The first question, certainly, at the section meeting, we basically talked about the, the things that staff and Council have implemented to date and, and sticking with the plan. So basically, for the time being, we're going to stick with what has been implemented. You know, the, the CAO alluded to, the command team meets on a regular basis, they're continuously reviewing matters. And I guess, under the leadership of His Worship, they'll bring matters forward if we need to consider them. With respect to your second question, we did have a conversation about that. Counselor Cummings and I did raise that issue with respect to the capital plan and potentially bringing that back as things start to ease up. And we talked about, we talked about a mechanism to be able to do that. And evidently, the wording in the report was such that Council does have the flexibility to request that that come back at a later date. That date, I'm not sure of when that would be. But certainly, Counselor Cummings and I felt leaving that meeting that we could revisit that, that capital plan that we had dealt with at the last, at the last meeting. Mr. CAO may have some additional comments on that because it was a point of conversation at our section meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just, I'll add a couple of things through to Counselor LaRose. One of the things that we've talked about at a staff level is that, you know, while, while Council did ratify the motion on April 22nd from our Director of Public Works report, the projects will still continue in the background. Those projects that we can't get out and be boots on the ground as a result of the Essential Services listing, they will still continue in the background as best as we can. Once the restrictions start to ease and staff kind of gets a handle on what's, you know, what the province is going to permit and allow in, in the, in the vein of Essential Services, staff will look to revisit what Council, the decision that Council has made in terms of capital project deferrals. And there's certainly an opportunity, as Counselor Vadabunkur has alluded to, certainly an opportunity to revisit those projects that Council has, I would, I would rather say that Council has pressed pause on and, as opposed to deferring entirely, you know, pending timing, you know, through to the end of the year, as well as pending resources, and in some cases, pending the availability of contractors. So there's a number of variables at play. But I think the short and the quick answer is that there's definitely opportunity to press play on some of those projects as opposed to keeping the pause button pressed. So hopefully, that provides just further information to, to your comments, Counselor Vadabunkur.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Does that answer your questions, Counselor LaRose?
That does. That's, that's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions from members of Council on the Treasurer's report? Seeing none, may I have a motion then to receive the Treasurer's report? And I don't have the exact wording. Let me call it up here. So that Report Finance 2020/11 Regarding 2020 Year-to-Date Financial Survey and COVID-19 Financial Impacts Update be received for information. And did I see a mover? There, Counselor Cummings and a second or Counselor LaRose? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. So moving on to the next item, bear with me for just a second. So this is an item pertaining to the adoption, the adoption of the 2020 tax rates and levies. And in the report highlights, it'll explain that where we had anticipated a 1% increase in assessment growth, that we were presently surprised by the assessment increasing by 4.1%, which means that the town is, is receiving additional funds in the amount of $325,000. And in the report, the Treasurer has outlined a couple of options and is recommending Option 2, which would put a portion of that money, $193,500, into the new, a new tax stabilization reserve and, and the balance back to the taxpayers to reduce the overall 2020 tax impact to 0%. So Section discussed this at its meeting and is recommending that, that Council approve Option, Option 2. So with that, I'll ask if the Treasurer has anything to add to my quick summary of, of the report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through to Council, just to, just to elaborate a little bit on the great summary that Counselor Vadabunkur presented. Ultimately, if Option 2 is recommended, recommended by committee and ratified by Council next June, ultimately, in addition to putting a portion of, a portion of that new assessment growth money back into the, into the pockets of residents now, in the short term, on their next tax bill. But also, what it does is reduce Council's original 2.5% tax increase that was approved back in December 2019 during our, our final budget meeting, and reducing it to 1.3%. So again, reducing our requirements, giving it back to the residents, and then ultimately the overall with town OPP, county and education, overall combined tax rate of, yeah, 0%, 0% over last year.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Oh, sorry?
Sorry, if I can just add, the new tax stabilization reserve is something that we have wanted to implement in prior years and felt like now was the time. Certainly, with this COVID situation, any, any year, it would be nice to have a tax stabilization reserve. But certainly, the recommendation being that if all of these monies are being utilized to assist residents, this portion being put into the, the new tax stabilization reserve is to be used by Council in future budget cycles to assist residents by easing or reducing potential tax impacts in the future.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. It's just, it's a great initiative. And you're right, it's a, it's an opportunity. And it's, it's, it's for the future. And when we run into one of those years where the tax rate may seem, seem a little bit high coming out of our budget process, we can always look to the Tax Rate Stabilization Fund to help smooth that tax increase. So I think it's a great initiative. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of Council? Seeing none. I saw Deputy Mayor's hand go up, but she, so she wasn't a card. So, okay. So just reading the, the motion then, that, let me go back to my screen. So the recommendation is that the 2020 tax rate levies and budget estimates be adopted as presented under Option 2. And then $193,500 in 2020 new assessment growth be transferred into a new tax stabilization reserve. And finally, that the clerk be directed to bring forward the necessary bylaws for Council approval. So may I have a mover for that motion? Counselor Sanamah, a second or Counselor LaRose? Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. So next item on the agenda is an information report pertaining to our Community Safety and Well-Being Plan and Update Number 1. And it's a report that was prepared by our clerk. So I'll ask our clerk to provide the highlights to, to Council on her information report. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Committee may remember, back in January, I brought forward a report regarding the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. And just as a reminder, we're participating in a collaborative initiative with Midland, Tiny and TAE to develop a joint community safety and well-being plan. This is required by the Police Services Act as amended. The plan will serve as a guide document for our community to develop strategies to address local priorities. So we'll be working with our stakeholder, our community stakeholders to come up with local priorities that make sense for our communities. And because we're working with our, our three neighboring, and that we've agreed upon what we see as three of the main topics that we should be focusing on. And those topics are listed in the motions for, for this evening. And those are affordable housing, education, and substance misuse. We were informed that the, the deadline for this report, or for this plan will be extended. But it sounds like it won't be extended by a year. It'll be extended by a month or two. We, we don't have the date exactly as yet, but it's not expected that we're going to get an extremely long extension to continue to deal with this. So we do want to continue to move forward. And those three items are what the, the group has come up with. As you might remember, Council appointed me as the representative for Penitent Angling. So I did attend those meetings. And these are where, where we're at and how we'd like to proceed. And so just looking for general support from Committee and, and to be ratified by Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions of the clerk on the report? Seeing none, I'll read the motion. That Update Number 1 regarding the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan be received for information, and that Council supports the proposed local priority risks, including affordable housing, education, substance misuse, as discussed by the North Simcoe Heronia Geographical Municipal Coordinating Committee at its meeting held March 5, 2020. So having heard the motion, may I have a mover? Counselor Cummings, a second or Counselor Sanamah? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to the referrals, we have one referral item, and that is the Heronia Airport Commission Joint Business Operational Review. And the expected date, you'll note, has been amended from Q4 2019 to Q3 2020. And that's the only change. So I don't believe there's anything added to the referral list. And so I'll read the motion, that the Finance and Corporate Services section endorse the following additional existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. Any discussion on referrals? Seeing none, may I have a mover for the referrals? Counselor Levy, second or Deputy Mayor Dubo? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion is carried. With that, your worship, I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you, Counselor Vadabunkur. And with that, that completes our committee, the whole meeting. And with that, I would also like to probably thank Rogers for their continued support and being with us this evening. And I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor LaRose, we are adjourned. Mover and a secondary to arise with report. Counselor Levy and Counselor Vadabunkur, all in favor? Carry. So reports from in-camera meeting held, the Municipal Lands Inventory Financial Analysis BL 202003. And mover and a secondary, please. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Sanamah, all in favor?
Sorry, your worship, would you, I just because for members of the public who are who would be watching this portion of the video, would you mind, please, reading the actual motion that members are moving, seconding, and voting on?
Okay, so it is that in accordance with the Town of Penetang Machine procedural bylaw 201925, the Council of the Town of Penetang Machine, no, that's not it. It's the Municipal Lands Inventory Financial Analysis?
Yep.
I don't have the motion to.
Oh, I actually don't have it in front of me either, but I'll ask our Director of Planning to read it so that council can know what they're they're moving and seconding and voting on.
I don't have it in front of me. Go ahead, Envia.
Thank you very much. So the recommendation is that staff be directed to list the following municipal lands with a real estate agent for potential sale. 13 Simcoe Street, 12 Dupree Drive, 14 Dupree Drive, 17 Jury, 224 Church Street, 171 Fox Street, 111 Church Street, 92 Shanahan Lane, and 132 Church Street. And that the lands identified as surplus in keeping with staff report PL 2020-03 be listed for sale through a real estate brokerage firm that is retained through a competitive RFP process.
Okay, and we had a mover and a secondary, I believe. Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, carry. Thank you. So it brings us to reports from in-camera meeting held.
No, we just, we just did that. So so you're all done.
So we're done. We are adjourned. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Sanamah. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. And I think that pretty well winds it up. Mr. CIO, do you have anything to add before we close the meeting?
No, I don't. I don't, your worship. Thank you. Thank you, though, for asking.
Okay, so that's it. Thank you, council, and good evening, one and all.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Have a good one.
Good night, everyone.